Testing, testing.
Good morning, almost good afternoon. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting, and this is especially a meeting for the proposal for the College Heights. As everyone acknowledged, that we are having this meeting on the traditional territory of Coast State's people, in particular, Qualicum First Nation. So I just want to express the concern that people have about this meeting. This is not a public hearing. If it goes that far, it will also have to have a public information meeting put on by the developers. This is just for us to hear for the first time officially, a proposal in your -- I see, I recognize the people who live here, that are in your area, and that is a concern, and I understand that. So we'll give you after the presentation by Council, by Director Seals, our planner, and also by the developer and the architect, to show you what the plans are. And then I want to make sure that this is a respectful workplace, for everybody, for the public, for the people who make presentations, for our staff, and for members of council, that this is a -- it's my job, and council will help me, to make sure that everybody feels comfortable and confident to speak, whatever opinion you may have on the proposal. So I don't want to hear people booing, or cheering, or clapping, or rolling eyes, anything like that, because someone else may want to speak with an opposing view. So we need a respectful workplace, and it's my intention to maintain that. So with that, Mr. Seals, would you start the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Westbrook. I have a brief introduction, and then I'll hand it back to you, and then we can hear directly from the applicant. The purpose of today's Committee of the Whole meeting is for council to consider, for the first time, an application to develop the land at 431 College Road. This is a property that's currently zoned for multi-residential. It historically had an old boys' school on the property, subsequently that was a hotel. The hotel no longer exists, and the site is essentially vacant, other than an existing parking garage. The proposal before, that has been submitted to the town, is to develop a 141-bed care facility, that would include assisted living, independent living, and memory care. And this is the first time that council has received this application, the first time that the application has been considered by the public. So it's essentially today's meeting is a chance for council to provide some initial feedback to the applicant. If there's clarification that the public is looking for, then there will be an opportunity to briefly describe that. But it's really important to note that this is a preliminary meeting. If the application does proceed, as council, as Mayor Westbrook indicated, there will be an official public hearing at one point. The developer will also be required to host a public information meeting, which is an opportunity for the public to ask questions, provide feedback directly between the public and the applicant. So with the understanding that this is, you know, the first time that people are seeing this, and that there will be many opportunities later, I hope that the meeting can proceed efficiently today. It's not a public hearing. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor Westbrook. Thank you.
Thank you. And just procedurally, for council, and we're not making a decision on this project today, but we have the agenda, and any changes to the agenda, then the agenda is adopted by consent, and we just have the first part of the planning, community development, and I would like to turn the floor over to the proponents. I would like to start with that. Gavin, go ahead. You come to the microphone. And just turn on the button at the base of the microphone, and that should turn green.
Hi there. My name's Gavin McIntosh. I'm the vice president with the Care Group. I'd like to just, first off, and start off by thanking everybody for being here today, and all the folks in the community as well. Thank you very much for coming. This is the beginning, this is sort of a first step for us, and so we really look forward to engaging with everybody through this entire process. So thank you very much.
You need to address the chair at all times.
Oh, pardon me. Okay, so like the -- okay, pardon me. I also want to introduce our team. So today, with us, we have Bryce and Smilka from RH Architects. They're the lead architect on the project. We also have Carsten Jensen from Carsten Jensen Architects, here in Qualicum Beach. We also have Maureen McIntosh, president of the Care Group, who will be saying a few words about our company and the project, as well as, we have Sandra Davy, our general manager at The Gardens. So we're all here today.
Okay. Is that seat just for the bag? There is a seat for someone who would like to stand up front, and there's one more in the back. And of course, the chairs in the lobby, and you can hear and see what's going on in here as well, on the chairs in the hallway. Thank you. Please proceed, Gavin.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. So today, again, we're here just to, we wanted to present to council just the concept of 140-bed assisted living and care home in Qualicum Beach, at 431 College Heights Road. But before we do that, before we get into the details, I wanted to bring Maureen McIntosh up, to speak about the Care Group, about our history in Qualicum, and about this project specifically. The town of Qualicum Beach. Pardon me. Maureen, coming up.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Maureen McIntosh, and I first and foremost am a nurse. And I have been nursing for 50-plus years, and am now about to embark in our third development for care in Qualicum Beach. So it's a very important time for us. The McIntosh family have been in Qualicum since the early, I guess, 1920s. They were original owners of the Qualicum Beach Hotel. We have had the Qualicum Manor, and now we have The Gardens. We are a family-owned company. Our business is funded and private care. So we, in all our sites, we have relationships with VHA, or Bank for Coastal, or whatever. So our goal here, and I really want to stress that, is to try and improve the care that you have in your community. We, we see from our experience at The Gardens that many people are dying in their homes, they're not getting the care they need, because we don't have the resources in our community to do it. I don't know how many times I, for instance, even in The Gardens, in our private area, our waitlist are like, up to three years, just to get care. And then you know that they're not going to get care. The other thing I really want to stress, that we all have the right to live in our community, and be residents of our community, until our life is over. We are not meant to go to institutions, and that is why we call it residential care. So our goal with this project is to provide them with, I would say, a luxury accommodation, whether it's subsidized or not, in a quiet residential area. And I know they'll love it. They'll love the view. They'll love the peacefulness of Qualicum. At the present time, we don't have--
Sorry, Maureen. For everybody, I take it quite seriously that this is Qualicum Beach. Qualicum is the name of the school district, so--
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. We, we hope that you understand that all of us, one day we're well, and the next day we need help, and it happens quickly. And we hope that you understand that it will happen to all of you in this room as well. And you will not want to be shuffled off 40 miles away to have care. So I ask you to consider our application, or our development, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. I just wanted to build a bit, a little bit on what Maureen has said, and just to hopefully provide some clarity on some of the challenges that are being faced within the community, and a little bit about how the project is hoping to address those challenges. And there's a project of, or a picture of The Gardens at Qualicum Beach. So in the town of Qualicum Beach, we have a number of seniors who are aging in their home. And that is, the preference for many, is to stay at home until they pass. The fact is, is that some of us will get dementia, and it won't be safe to live at home. Some of us will become frail, and be in a wheelchair, and will have a home that doesn't accommodate that need. A setting such as this one on College Road is designed to address that. If somebody were to stay at home and try to have private care 24 hours a day, for somebody, for example, with dementia, this is going to cost in hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Our hope is to provide a home for them, within the town of Qualicum Beach, that is either subsidized, or considerably less than that, due to the fact that people are living in a congregate setting, and able to effectively share the costs of aging. Today, some folks may know that there are some new homes that have been built on Vancouver Island, or are in the process. For example, there's one being built in Lansville, which is approximately 30 minutes down the road. There have also been some built up in Comox. But at present, there is nothing being proposed by VHA between those two sites. And we know that we have a shortage of beds in the Oceanside area. And so, what that will leave is longer waitlists, and longer drives. Our belief is that people, say, couples, that live together, and at some point, let's say the husband falls too sick, and the wife can no longer take care, don't deserve to have to drive 30 minutes down the highway to have their needs being met. The burden for a, for a family, for that to happen, is severe, both for the person in care who feels the guilt for having to use people to carry these distances, but also for the person who has to drive those distances, and puts it off, and puts it off, and puts it off for so long, until they're also very tired, and potentially very sick, because they've been giving all of themselves to their loved one. What we're trying to do here is meet the need for the residents of the town of Qualicum Beach, in the town of Qualicum Beach, rather than having people have to drive 30 minutes down the highway, potentially in the dark, in winter. I was at a celebration of life recently, that really highlighted this for me, which was a close family friend who had early onset dementia. She lived in Granville Island, in the Vancouver area, and she actually lived on a houseboat, and she had dementia. And she stayed there for as long as she possibly could. Her family did everything, because they didn't want her to move into a care home, because they wanted her to be at home. Eventually, it just became too dangerous. And so she was able to move into our home, Point Gray Private Hospital, in Kitzalano, on the water, five minutes down the road, and have, for a period of time, private care, but for most of the time she was there, subsidized care. She had what she deserved, her family was close, we met her needs until her last day. Change is hard. If I go back to 2014, when we were proposing that development in Vancouver, we had to, there were neighbors, there were lots of concerned folks, that thought that the nursing home that we had in place was big enough, and they didn't want to see it expand. But that day, presenting to the mayor of Vancouver, Mayor Gregor Robertson said, "I can't think of a better place to age than at Point Gray Private Hospital." And so they approved it, and we went forward, after much conversation and development, working very closely, both with the community and with council. And we were able to build something that this close friend, Kim, was able to move into, in her neighborhood. Had we not, the waitlist could have been longer, it could have been put off, and she could have, you know, she would have been living at risk. The same thing happened when we built the Casamia project in Vancouver. We were trying to build the Mansion of Casamia, we were trying to build a beautiful home, a beautiful setting, with a view of the river and the mountains, for residents, both subsidized and private pay. There were immediate neighbors that were upset about it, but I can tell you now, that now that we're in place, and we've addressed all the concerns, through much conversation, engagement with council, engagement with the community, that we were able to develop something that is, has been a great addition to the community, and the community has, there's a two-year waitlist to get in, because that's where people want to be. They want to be close to home. They don't want to drive 20 minutes downtown, or out, you know, or any further than that, which we, which we respect and we understood. So much so, that the property next door, the city is now very supportive of us expanding to, because they know that the need is there. And so what, what 10 years ago might have seen, seemed like something that was outrageous, now is something that they are extremely supportive of, and they think it's a perfect use for the site. Change happens, we're evolving. And the town of Qualicum Beach, in particular, demographically is evolving. And our hope is that we can help scratch the surface of meeting that need. We asked, there's a, there's a lady named Kate Manser, and she is an independent living and long-term care feasibility study professional. So she looks at the statistics, she looks at the numbers, to figure out whether a community needs either independent living, assisted living, or long-term care. I'll share a few numbers, because I think that they might resonate with folks. But, there were, there were many, many numbers, but I'm just going to share some of the high level ones. Because today, at The Gardens at Qualicum Beach, we have a 357-day waitlist, for folks that want to access subsidized care. So that's a year, if you want to move in. And we think that that's too long, because in that, in that year, bad things can happen to people, because they're living in an unsafe way. They've been deemed to require 24-hour care, but Island Health can't provide it, because the homes don't exist. Not only can Island Health not provide it, but no one else can either, because the care homes are not in place, to the extent that we need. So Kate did, Kate looked into the 85-plus population, and found that today, in the town of Qualicum Beach and Parksville, there's approximately 2,600 people, 85-plus. And these are typically the folks that might move into a home like 431 College Road. Over the next 10 and some years, that number will triple. So it'll go from 2,600 to 7,800. So we are getting older, and so what we have today, isn't meeting our needs, and what we will have in 10 years, will be meeting one-third, or will not be meeting one-third of our need. The projections that they, that she shared, based off of sort of standard use of these sorts of services for communities within British Columbia, were that in five years, Qualicum will need 90 new independent living suites, and 211 new long-term care beds. In 10 years, it'll need 180 independent living suites, and 552 long-term care beds, to meet the need of these 85-plus population. And so, these are, these are staggering numbers. Qualicum is a small town, and unfortunately, as I've said, the health authorities are not building, Qualicum Beach, pardon me, is, is a small, small town from, from a pure population perspective, but from a senior's perspective, there are a number of folks here that will need that help. Unfortunately, as I've said, in Lansville, there's a new home being built, and up in Comox, there's been some new homes built. But in between here, there, there's not a lot of new development happening, and so this would just be one piece of it. So in 10 years, we would have, of the 180 independent living suites that would generally be required, based on the current usage, we would have 40. And then of the 552 long-term care beds, we'd be, we'd be meeting one-fifth of the need. And so that, I just wanted to help frame that, just to show how important it is that we get on top of this, because the cash-strapped government right now is not planning on anything. They may in time, because they, they also have access to numbers like this, but we want to make sure that the folks at Qualicum Beach have a place to live, and we think that College Road is a great spot for that. We think it's a great spot, because it is just a beautiful, it has a beautiful view, it's in a quiet neighborhood, and we think that seniors--
Excuse me. I asked in the beginning, perhaps the person that just came in didn't hear me, but no interruptions, please. We need to let anyone who has a floor speak, without interruptions, or without any booing, or cheering, or clapping. Just listen respectfully, and don't say anything you wouldn't say in front of your grandchildren, or your grandparents. Thank you.
And so, thank you. With that need, we, we think about the scale of projects that one might bring, and one might look to build. And if, if you heard me, I said that the project in Lansville is 300, 300 beds. That's what VHA is doing. The, the projects, for us, that, that's a very big, big project, and it isn't, it feels a little bit more institutional than we would like. What we're proposing is less than half that size. But any smaller than that, with cost to construction these days, and costs of, costs of land, and cost to operate, anything less than, than what we're proposing, becomes uneconomical. In particular, if you're hoping to, and you can see, Fraser Health right now has an RFP out, and they're up for 150 beds or more. And there's, there's a reason for that, just the, the management team that you need, and the construction costs, and the debt financing, all the rest of it. You just need a certain scale, in order to provide care at a price that people can afford, and that the health authority can afford. And so that is a big part of our story as a company, is over the years, we've built care homes, that in time, the health authority has effectively, once we've built it, then they start asking for our beds, because there is a shortage, that is, that, in that area. We identify it, we build it as private pay, but they take on what are called temp beds, or they contract beds with us directly. So that is part of the path we hope to do here, is build something for the right price, that subsidized or funded residents could live in. And so of this, our hope would be of, of the three floors, the top three floors, that are going to be more traditional, memory care, long-term care, we would hope that two of those floors, or approximately 90 beds, would be subsidized. That's a hope for us, and it's a real hope. 60, 70% of our, of the beds that we have in our company are subsidized care beds, and that is very much the, the kind of business that we want to operate, and we want to take care of folks that need it, in their community, at a cost that is affordable. It's, um--
Claude, I think you made a very good case about why we need more beds in our community. Perhaps it's time to show what kind of facility you're planning.
Yeah, great. And so we'll do that. So I just wanted to thank you. So I just wanted to just highlight that there, the scale of the project, both the site will be discussed by Carsten, and the project itself will be discussed by Bryce. And so as it stands, what we've proposed is independent assisted living on the first two floors, and then on the top three floors, more of a memory care, long-term care model. And that's how we're hoping to meet the need. Okay. Thanks, everyone, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Gavin. I'm Carsten Jensen, one of the architects on the project. My office is here in, in Qualicum Beach. First of all, I'd like to state that this is the first time that our project is being presented to the public. This is out of respect to the council, we felt that council should see it first. However, I'd like to emphasize that we will be seeking engagement, especially with the immediate neighborhood, within the coming weeks. And of course, throughout the process, we will be seeking engagement also with the broader pop, broader community. So when I look around the, the group here, I see a lot of familiar faces. I'm not going to go into the history of the site very deeply, because I know that most of the people here know the site, and know quite a lot about the site. But let me just give you a general overview. So this is a bird's eye view of the site. It's right in the middle there. It's on a bluff, overlooking the Sailor's Sea. Directly below it is Judge's Row. In between, that, we have property that's owned on the slope there, by Qualicum Beach. Beyond the site is College Road itself, and beyond, beyond College Road, one block is 19A. To the right is Hemsworth Road, which is one block from 19A. The site is kind of interesting, College Road is kind of interesting, because College Road used to be part of Highway 19, before Highway 19 was relocated to its current, to its current location, and became 19A. So College Road used to be part of the main road, and the, this building, that many, many of you know very well, was built in 1935, and it was built as a boys' school, the Qualicum College. And-- And it was built as a boys' school, the Qualcomm College. And for half of its 70 years, it ran as a boys' school. And then for the other half, when the boys' school closed in 1970, it ran as the Qualcomm Inn. I think probably a lot of the people in the audience today and, you know, on council, remember Qualcomm Inn very well as a place, they have fond memories as a place for weddings, anniversaries, you know, visiting the pool, the bar, the restaurant, you know, it was, it was really an important place for Qualcomm Beach and people's memories. But about 15 years ago, the site was purchased for redevelopment when Qualcomm, the Qualcomm, the Qualcomm Inn closed, Qualcomm College Inn closed. And it was purchased for redevelopment and the site was partially redeveloped 15 years ago. But the, the development, the, the rest of the site remained undeveloped for the past 10 years. This is the center part of the original Qualcomm College. And it used to have two wings, one to either side, residential wings. When the developers had this property, they allowed the, the property to, or the center part, they, they tore down the two wings. They allowed the center part to deteriorate to the point where it was torn down by the previous owners four years ago. The building was an iconic building for Qualcomm Beach because it was pretty well the first thing that you saw when you're coming on the road from the 902 Qualcomm Beach. When you saw the Qualcomm College, you knew, you know, you were in Qualcomm Beach. This has been very much in our minds, in the minds of our design team, you know, as we developed the, the current design. We tried to be respectful to Qualcomm Beach's memories of the original building. And we've also tried to be respectful to the neighbors and to, to the, the community as a whole. One of the things that we did was we have planned for a large view corridor between ourselves and our immediate neighbors, anywhere from 75 to 110 feet wide. This is a view corridor that will be useful, I think appreciated, I hope, for the community as a whole, who come onto College Road, but also by the immediate neighborhood of College Road. In terms of form and character, we have, I won't go into the details of this, Bryce will go into the details next, but we have tried to be respectful to the original form and character of the college building. And we have included reminders of, of some of that form and character. Specifically, the top story is, is in the roof. We have gables and various other elements from the original building. And the scale is actually quite similar when you consider the, the two wings, the, the width of the building is quite similar-
Excuse me, excuse me, Carson. Is there a problem, sir? Is there a problem?
Only the volume is not high enough.
Okay. Can you move the microphone closer to you, Carson? And turn it a little bit?
Sorry. Sorry. So in terms of width, the, the building is about the same, similar width to what the original college was, college building was with its two wings. In terms of height, the original college building was four story, three stories high and our proposal is four stories high. And let's see, and as I mentioned, the top story is in the, in the roof. This is a view from College Road. So Bryce will now go into the details of the design.
Thank you, Carston. Bryce Rossich, architects, pleased to be here today. I know somebody from architecture school sitting at the, at the desk. We understand how important this site is and how sensitive the site is. Adjacent to us are single-family homes, condominium development. It's on a promontory, it's in a very prominent location. So we understood how important it is to design something that's very respectful of Qualcomm Beach and we hope adds to the overall character of Qualcomm Beach. You can see that there's the main building to the, there's a one-story entry pavilion and that's where everybody's welcomed. This is facing College Road. So on, from College Road, you'll see the one-story entry pavilion, the building behind and then, and then the space between this building and the condominium development to the east. The College Road, of course, is the south side of the site. So we know it's important to provide some outdoor space for the residents of, of this development. And on top of that, entry pavilion would be a, a beautiful sunny terrace and then as well as terrace on the ground floor. Over the garage, the current garage, because it's a very complicated site, there is that current garage, it's shared in part with the adjacent development. So there's lots of complexities about this site. We couldn't develop any closer to College Road because of the existing concrete parcade. We could build a two-story portion over the parcade and this is the portion that's over the current entrance to the parcade. So in addition to four stories, three plus the roof story facing College Road, we have the two-story annex to the west. And so again, that helps break down the scale, especially since there are single-family homes further to the west. As I say, we have a view corridor between our building and the building next door. Our scale is definitely larger. You're going to hear from the community to say, well, it's out of scale. Well, it's very much different use. We feel because of the pressing need for a high quality of housing for aged people, that it's important to have something here. And so we're trying to be as respectful as possible to the adjacent neighbors. So we have a terrace area between the, this proposed building and the condominium development. This is over the existing parcade roof. And then we've got a common area in between the two that we're going to be working with the condominium development to say, how can we, it's, it's a shared one, there's an easement. How can we do something, design something that is a benefit to everybody? So this is kind of boring. I'll just quickly go through some plans. The lower, longer portion, that's existing parcade. And then the L shape on the top, that's the new parcade on which we're going to be building our building. So the first level is independent living. It backs up against the parcade. The parcade has a sloped roof to it and it's got some outdoor areas. You can see the condominium development to the, to the east. Second floor, this is the main entry. This is where I talked about that entry pavilion, the very welcoming entry pavilion for residents for both independent living on the first two levels and assisted living and memory care on levels three and above. And you can see here that we've tried to design a, a building that is so respectful. We know that 141 beds, we're going to have people, over 10 years, there might be five, four, five, 600 people who live here. And so we want to provide something that is beneficial for all of those people. So we've got very much open areas. We've taken strong advantage of the views to the north. We recognize that there's pretty heavy trees there, so it's not going to be full view to the Sailor's Sea, but there will be some. So we're having views to the north from all the common areas. And then above, we've got, this is where we'd have assisted living and memory care. The landscaping, there's currently cul-de-sac, the round, half-round that's currently there. To the lower left is the current driveway that goes to the parcade. That will be left. And, and it's just building on top of that. This is our landscape plan. And we have walkways. There's an easement for a pathway to the north that will continue. There's a pathway on the west side that connects to the stairs down below and that certainly will continue. This is really blocky. Comment, Google Earth has not taken photographs from Judges Road, so we couldn't superimpose those buildings on top, which we will when we come back next to you. But this shows, and they're, they're not blocks like this at all, but the scale of the buildings on Judges Road and just the density of trees and bushes that Qualcomm Beach owns on that hillside above. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to present and we're open now to questions and comments from council.
Thank you. Council comments, questions? And I noticed you noted one of our councillors having experience in the training and schooling of architecture. Would you like to start off, Mr. Vandevark?
Thank you. Yes, it's been many years since I last, last saw Mr. Rossich, but, well, I think my, my concerns are probably ones that, that have been somewhat addressed. The main thing is, it is a very residential neighborhood and we do need to be looking at buildings and facilities that respect the neighborhoods. And it's not only just the building type, but also the use. Because with this institutional use, there will be, I'm assuming, a great number of staff involved and different services that are coming and going to the building on a fairly consistent basis. And that will generate a large or a great variety of activities and will change the, the neighborhood, I think. So I do have concerns about that. The other concern and other concern that I have is that the site is relatively isolated from the uptown core. And if we look at examples that were listed, Eagle Park and Qualcomm Manor and the gardens as well, residents can go, if they're able, can walk to the uptown area and be involved in the community. And I question whether that's going to be available for residents that are, are living here. I think that that's a real, I don't want to use the word shortcoming, but a real concern about your choice of site for this specific use. And at a previous meeting, I was quoted as being the councillor that's concerned about gentle densification, which I am. So I am concerned about the size and the height of, of the proposed building and how it fits in with the scale of the surrounding buildings. So other, another concern that I have is on the drawings, you have vehicular access onto Hemsworth and I think that that may well be a problem because Hemsworth is a small street and it's a quiet street and there's a pathway that comes up from the stairs. So those would be my concerns. It's the use, the, the location of this use and the scale. And then there are some sort of design considerations, but I won't go into that even though my background wants to. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go through the questions from members of council and then I'll give you an opportunity to speak to them if you like. Councilor Harrison.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So just so the public's aware of some conversations I've had, when Oceanside Hospice had their AGM, there was a brief discussion with a woman who is, I forget the exact job title, but basically in charge of long-term care for the Mid-Island. And specifically about the Lanceville facility, I actually tracked her down and asked about the Lanceville facility, what's, what's happening with that. Because I'd read some articles in the Black Press about the OCP process, because that requires an OCP amendment as well. She said basically that facility is pushed back to 2029 is now the expected opening date. Previously it was 2027, when they announced it in 2023 is when they had the press release. So that's being pushed back at least two years. And then, I mentioned this earlier today, I see a lot of economic headwinds coming for the provincial and federal governments. I see a lot of their tax revenues going down as the impacts of probably a 10 to 15% tariff on everything becomes the new reality with America and that's three-quarters of our trade, I think roughly is with America as a country. So there'll be declining revenue and I can see projects getting pushed back even further. So that's just one concern. Also, two, in terms of some of the dementia data, there was a study from Alzheimer's Society of Canada in 2022, and it's from page 17 of that study, just quoting here, just so folks understand, it's not just a proponent saying there's going to be an increase in dementia. By 2030, we can expect a 51% increase in the number of new cases of dementia and an overall increase in the number of Canadians living with dementia of 65%. That's by 2030. Basically, the baby boomer generation is getting really old. And as you get older, dementia incidence increases in a curve and it's actually more prevalent for women than for men. So there's a, women, I think, when you get age 85 is roughly one in three, men is roughly like 20% or so, or one in four. And folks can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but from reading CHI data and Alzheimer's Society data, that's what I just wanted to remember. So I checked the CHI, there was a little thing, the CHI Dimension Canada report, it said over 85, you have roughly one in four incidence rate. So we have 865 citizens over the age of 85 or older. So one in four of that, you've got over 200 people. So that's just the raw data for Qualcomm Beach. I don't have anything specific from VHA. So there is going to be a lot of demand. It is a very large building, relatively speaking, compared to the neighbors. That's a fair comment. About the mobility, like I would point out though, that Berwick has far more restrictions in terms of your quality of life. Basically, the folks who would be the most extreme cases in terms of dementia, wouldn't be allowed to stay in Berwick. And Berwick has a bus. That's how they drive around the community and go to different events and they have a bus. So if you are planning on doing that, I would strongly suggest you do. And the last thing too is, for a couple of years when I was younger, I did live-in care for folks with disabilities and disability delays. So it was more community living than a larger building like this. But it is a very hard job. And as we're looking at projects like this, we also need to have a conversation about the workers in these sorts of facilities as a town and as a region, because they do not get paid much. When I moved to Qualcomm Beach from Montreal, I said, oh, well, this is a job I did. I used to do live-in care. I wonder what the going salary is? And it was the exact same as I was paid in Prince George 15 years earlier. So you have a lot of folks who are not getting paid very much. It's a very hard job. I worked at McDonald's, I worked in a bunch of other jobs when I was younger. Living care at the Children's Rest Home was the only place where I came home and did a face plant on my bed at the end of my shift and just fell asleep. I took off my shoes and that was it. So I do hope that if we're going to be talking about moving forward projects like this, also as a town, I know in our OCP, we have had that conversation of identifying workers as a priority group, especially care aides, people who provide care, also through groups like Inclusion Parksville, not just this project, but throughout the community. We're going to have to have a real conversation of how do we as a region accommodate that? Because I've heard about the living conditions of some of the folks who do that job and we can do better as a region. I'm not putting fingers at anyone individually, it's not any individual person's fault, but it's something we do need to, if they're going to be taking care of the most vulnerable of us, then we need to make sure they at least have a reasonable quality of life.
Thank you. I think Councilor Harrison raised a good point about, how many employees do you think you would need for a facility like this?
Sorry. It would be approximately 80 to 100.
Thank you. Councilor Skipsey.
Yeah. I'm not going to say too much right now because I think perhaps a lot of the people here are going to have similar comments to what I would make. So I'm, I'm welcome that input and I'm ready to listen. I do like the look and the nod to the old college, college inn style. I think it's quite attractive. For me, it's a little big and I appreciate the view corridor. I would, I would be happy if that was corridors somehow and I think the neighbors might be as well. But yeah, I'm happy to listen and I think this is a, a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Young.
I agree with Councilor Skipsey that I'm interested in hearing what the public has to say about this. But I'm curious, I, I know that it is a concern about the, the massing of this building. Is it possible to still get like 141 beds in a three-story build or something that is still pretty to look at and will accommodate?
Thank you for that question. Because of the impact of the parcade in front where we can't build on other than the two-story annex, no, it's not possible. We looked at it. We looked at it being one story shorter and it just wasn't enough room. We've got the setbacks, there's bank stabilization, we have to be quite bit far back from the bank. So it's a very constrained site.
Thank you. It was touched on by Councilor Harrison and Councilor Vandevark. When you have- When you have 80 people working there, where are they going to live? And when there is a crew shift change, and I've looked after a friend of mine who lived in Harris Smith Lodge, when the crew shifts change, there's a huge amount of traffic, cars coming and going, people coming and going, delivery trucks coming and going. So how would you address that? I mean, you have parking presumably enough for the people who are staying there, but for people who come to visit or people who work and people who leave their work, how would you accommodate all that traffic? That seemed like a bit of a challenge. So that's one of the questions I have. And I also want to point out that I think the comments that are made by councillor at this point are probably very similar to what the community is also wanting to say. So after we get the initial response to the questions that were raised, we'll have a timer, one minute. One minute. Well, I just want to remind you, when we ran for mayor and councillor, we often get one minute to explain how we're going to fix the world problems. So I'm going to ask the architects, or Gavin, or Carsten, to speak to the comments that were made earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. So the topics that I'd like to touch on, one is first, the traffic related to deliveries, and then two is traffic related to staff members. And then also touching on workers and where they might live is obviously a very touchy subject, so we appreciate that. Having employed about 140 people at the Gardens, we understand that challenge. And then the, and then potential shuttle or just the location of the site, because we appreciate that challenge as well. So I'll say, from our experience, we have two homes that are almost identical in size. The things that we from, get from, there's sort of things that come in, deliveries, and then there's things that are going out, which is going to be recycling and garbage. We would expect probably in a given week to have, there's going to be a milk truck, there's going to be a food truck, and there's going to be a med supplies truck. So those would be three. And then you're going to have garbage pickup three times a week and recycling probably approximately two times a week. So you're going to expect at least one truck a day, maybe two. That would be, that's just from our experience. So I just wanted to say that. In terms of the location, it is a, this is a bit of a destination, you might say, compared to living in a downtown area. And so absolutely, a shuttle would be a part of, a part of life, and we would have, similar to what we have at the Gardens, we can take folks into town, and so that would help meet the needs. Our site, Casamian Vancouver, is overlooking a bluff, and in the backyard, there's a beautiful walking area, so families come to visit. But also, there is a town nearby, Carisdale, and it's a very similar distance, and so folks can shuttle up to there as well. So that's been, that's been our experience. So it's sort of, the waitlist is years long, because people still like to be in a beautiful setting to live most of their day, they don't necessarily want to be shopping. And so we'll definitely have a shuttle. In terms of the parking, so we've designed the parking to accommodate both the comings and goings of visitors and the comings and goings of team members. This is a site where we can expect that there'll be a combination of people coming on car and maybe people coming by bicycle, but lots of folks will be coming by car. And so we've worked within the standard guidelines for a home of this size. Shift change is when it really happens, and so we do have to manage that. And so we would work with the team to make sure that people are at the different shifts are parking in the right spot, so that this is where the afternoon shift parks, this is where the day shift parks, and this is set aside for visitors. So that's how, that's how we would address that, and that's how we do address it in our homes. In terms of housing, so when we started working with the Gardens five years ago, we learned very quickly that there is, there are housing challenges and shortages, and the cost of housing is very expensive. We would be working with, both within our own building initially, to address the initial shock of the move-ins. By that, I mean resident, the team members that might be coming to Qualicum for the first time, they might, we might set aside a neighborhood, so, which is a section or of one of the floors, where those folks could land and spend maybe one to three months seeking out accommodation. Qualicum doesn't have a lot of one-bedroom apartments ready for folks, there's lots of homes. And so our experience at the Gardens has been that team members get together and are able to rent entire homes, which is, which is, it's a big part of how things work. Or one team member might buy a home and then they'll rent out rooms, that kind of thing. We're also very keen on, to the extent we can, building residences as well. And so it's something we would, we would look at, perhaps, on some of the other properties that we have in Qualicum. So we're very open to that, to try to build more staff housing as well. And so those are some conversations that we look forward to having. But we do expect that, you know, the hope is that, as folks, you know, the hope is that as people move out of their homes, homes free up, and so there might be sort of an evolution. So the folks that need to help are able to, to take advantage of the suites that may have opened up as well. So those are the main ones. And again, appreciating the height question, which I think Bryce addressed. I think we've covered.
Thank you. I know it takes, it takes a while to get used to the name Qualicum Beach. But it also takes to get used to the character of the town of Qualicum Beach and the culture and what we like and what we don't like. So we are a unique community, where we take great pride in the care that the town councils over the years have taken to make sure that we maintain the reasons that attracted her in the first place. So that takes a little getting used to as well. But anyway, it's up to anyone here, is there a lineup? Okay, thank you. So please keep your comments concise, knowing that there will be an outreach by the developer and the architects for, thank you, thank you, Daniela. There'll be an opportunity for consultation with the neighborhood that will be organized by the developers and their team members. So the first one is Carol Burke? Yes. Byrne, sorry. That's okay. Yes, Ms. Vincent.
I'd just like to clarify, too, we are going to use a timer on top of the stand, so you'll have your one minute, you'll see the light go on when your one minute. You don't touch, yeah, just so each speaker will see it.
All right. Hi. I actually live in the condo, 439 College Road, but I've lived in Qualicum Beach since 1986. So been there, done that for the college inn, et cetera. Anyway, a question we have is access to the gardeners that come currently down the side of the parcade to take care of the gardens for the strata at 439 College Road. So it doesn't look to me like there's access at all. And then it involves the whole access on Hemsworth as well. So I'd like to know about that.
Thank you, Carol, appreciate that. Deborah Boyle. And after Deborah, Steve Boyle, on deck. Please use the microphone.
All of the presentations that have been done have been estimated on three minutes, not one minute. I can read page one in one minute.
We'd like to keep it concise.
I know.
Because we also have another meeting coming up, but also, this is not a public hearing, where I wouldn't put those restrictions on. But looking at the size of the turnout and the fact that there will be more consultation provided and provided by the developer, it'd be a good time to bring it up. So if you could perhaps summarize, I know you're good at that too, Deborah, so.
No, I'm not good at that, but I will take a look. Okay. Okay. The drawings show one stall for every three beds, insufficient, suggesting on-street for mobile residents. Beyond that, where is the parking for visitors? We could not find it on the plans. Size is a very large building situated very close to the slope down to Judges Row. If a geotechnical has been done, I would remind staff that in 2010, they had to raise it by 1.3 meters because it was unstable. Traffic with 141 units plus staff plus ambulances plus visits, visitors, this will put a tremendous stress on College Road, as College is the only ingress and egress to that site. This area has a lot of traffic, and as recently as a month ago, we had a major accident that resulted in one individual being going to the hospital. Ocean views, the developer obviously realizes that the size of the building is going to impact almost all the ocean views off of College. They have allowed for only one area, one house, to continue to have a view, and that one is doubtful. So this is a real problem for us. We enjoy our views, we enjoy the ocean, we enjoy the calmness of it, and we have nothing left. However, the building will have very nice views. We will not. That's as far as I can go.
Thank you. Well, I think you identified the problems, you articulated it really well.
Only some.
Yeah, you got, you got the main points.
There you go.
Next, on deck is Steve Boyle. And after that, Barb Hove, so if you want to get on deck, that makes it helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now I know what it feels like to follow Winston Churchill giving a speech, you know? Anyways, I've tried to reduce this down to one minute from Susan Groton Durst of 354 Burnham Road, she couldn't be here today. She commented on the lack of sidewalks and nearby community amenities makes this location unsuitable for seniors who may not drive but could otherwise walk to access services or socialize. The absence of safe pedestrian infrastructure poses a serious risk to mobility and safety. The issue of parking is also a major concern, which has been addressed here, as well as the environmental impacts proposed development on neighboring properties, the potential for drainage issues, which have lasting consequences for the neighboring properties. And she, in conclusion, she says, I respectfully urge the relevant authorities to reconsider this proposal and to explore alternative locations that are better suited to meeting the needs of seniors while preserving the safety, character and livability of our community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Barb Hove.
So my name's Barbara Van Hove, and I live at 465 College Road. Today, I speak on behalf of my husband, Robert, and a number of neighbors who are unable to attend. Friday's announcement was very short notice for a Wednesday meeting in the middle of summer. I just want to make two things clear. We've never been against development on the site. It's been an eyesore for too many years now, largely due to said developers not being able to follow through with their overzealous plans. While we've lived on the street for 18 years, we've been through this process, this is now going to be the fourth time, where we get to the arduous process of commenting on developers' would-be wish lists. The second point I want to make is that we acknowledge that, yes, there is a need for seniors' housing and long-term care, it's a concern and priority around the world. What we do question is how a five-plus story, I believe that that building, once you've got the roof on it with all the accommodation in the roof, will be nearer to five stories, how it can be allowed to overshadow and dominate such a small neighborhood. The current strata, if you look at the picture, is more or less in keeping with what's gone before, but will now have to be dwarfed by the new proposal. We ask how we've got to this. A massive care facility in a neighborhood not geared for traffic generated by a combination of independent living residents. Remember, some of the independent living residents will still have cars. A large staff count needing parking, it's already been addressed that there will be 80 to 100 staff, I'm guessing it'll be 100 plus. Ongoing deliveries, ambulances, various medical services, not to mention daily visitors. And all of this in a small residential neighborhood with no sidewalks for ease of wheelchairs and walkers. Limited parking and not within walking distance of stores and coffee shops. Again, we ask how have we got to this? One thing I did notice with interest is that there was a diagram showing an artist impression of Judges Row properties, but no artist impression of a single-family dwelling house on College Road against the development. Also, one last thing I would make a point of is that the length of road required for in and out on College Road is very short, there are only 14 houses on the College Road area that will be taking the brunt of the traffic. So it is something to consider. It's great to be considering care homes for the future, but this size in our size neighborhood, let's talk about it and let's get something more in keeping. Let's have a care home, but five stories, a monolithic overshadowing, overshadowing our neighborhood surely is not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And as some of you may have noticed, I allowed the speaker to go on beyond a minute, hoping that, and she has, Ms. Hove has laid out the concerns of the neighborhood very well. I think he articulated the concerns really well. So if you were thinking to make the same comments, just tell us that, yes, we have the similar concerns, so we don't have to repeat everybody's comments, because we know what they are. It's the traffic, it's the size of the building, it's the location, it's the kind of service we provide. So we got that. And I think the architects are taking copious notes of your concerns, and when we have the public engagement with the neighborhood, they can be specifically addressed for your intention. Next is, so I will be asking people to stick with the one minute to allow as many as possible. Hemmingway? Ms. Hemmingway? Mr. Hemmingway?
Well, as you've pointed out, many of the remarks I have to make have been already identified. This is not an architectural issue, building design is not the issue here, it's a pure site planning use issue. I think Van der Valk stated it quite clearly, the building bulk is an FSR of about 1.2, which is an urban downtown kind of density. And I'm not talking about unit density, I'm talking about building density. The building square footage is way too high. The access issues that were pointed out on Hemsworth with the numbers that were identified for service vehicles, the coming and going, the garbage trucks. I happen to live next door, but regardless of who lived next door, that would become a real issue. So I ask all you honorable people to really suggest that there are some other locations for very honorable facilities such as this, and I applaud these people for doing it, but let's find another location for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hemmingway. And I appreciate you sticking to the time as well. You did well. And then Val Hemmingway? Same?
I'm going to just give you my other two minutes of the time with councillors, because I don't want to take up the time and then just go to one minute.
Thank you. Okay, we'll pre-submit to Ms. Vincent, and then it'll be circulated to council and staff. Sheldon Nicklin?
First of all, my apologies for, this is my first meeting of this. When I came in, I thought everyone had to sign in, but I did think of two questions when I'm sitting here as the presentations were being presented. The first is the proximity of the proposed development to 19A. I realize that there is a crosswalk there. My concern is even with, with residents and whatnot, I still want to cross there. I think what we'd have to be considering is a traffic light there with flashing lights warning that the light's about to turn red. I realize it goes from 70 to 50 kilometers an hour. However, I just am concerned people will start to cross, and that could present a danger. The second thing that I thought of when I was sitting there was, you know, like others, there's concern with the height of the building. My concern is more functional and the safety of the residents. My mother lived in a two-story residential home, and the elevator was just insufficient to bring people up and down. Five stories, I just, I don't know, maybe it's in the details, but what would they reconsider for safety to get them out in a hurry? But that's the two questions I had.
Thank you. Very good points. Next is Karen Girk.
My concerns were addressed by councillor Van der Valk about Michael access for seniors to get into town.
Thank you, Ms. Girk, thank you. Paul Keiber. No, you don't have to push anything.
My name is Paul Keiber. My wife and, my wife Marilyn and I live on the corner of Burnham and Hemsworth Road. We've been there for 20 years. I have two comments. Well, first of all, I don't have much to say about the proposal that hasn't been already said by other speakers, including councillor Van der Valk, particularly the, her references to the access to Hemsworth, but there are other comments as well about the shape and scale of the project being so large in our residential neighborhood. So it's been quite a while since I've looked at the official community plan, but there are two principles. since I've looked at the official community plan, but there are two principles that I remember from the, from the official community plan that I hope are still entrenched. One is that density is located in the, in the village center, and not in residential neighborhoods, small residential neighborhoods like ours. And secondly, the development in small neighborhoods like ours is to be of a human scale. So my question to the town is, are those two principles still? Okay. So my second question is, how long would this take to be constructed? And the reason I ask is that it was 12 years ago that our neighborhood endured a nightmare of construction, dirt, mud, pollution, noise, and disruption, as the first of the three approved buildings was constructed, and the so-called underground garage. This went on for 18 months, and it affected our daily life, safety, and without exaggeration, the collective mental health of residents. So I really believe that serious consideration needs to be given now by the town to mitigating the impact on our streets during construction and after, but specifically during construction, so that there's a clear stipulation about how the surrounding streets must be used and maintained. We have small, narrow streets, and they're heavily used by cyclists and pedestrians year-round. People walking their dog, pushing baby carriages, carrying their towels down to the beach. We love that about our streets. It's not conducive to big, heavy construction equipment and, and traffic. So it needs to be properly managed. 12 years ago, it was chaos. Trucks were going this way, that way, and every, which way. I always tell the story about the mayor. We complained like on New Year's Eve, there was, it was just mud everywhere outside our house. So I phoned the town, the town hall, and I complained. And I was off at a meeting or visiting with friends and came home, and Marilyn said to me, Tunis told me not to say anything to you, but he came over with a brush, with a, with a broom. And he was out on the street, like, you know, sweeping, sweeping the streets. So that's what it was like for us, like 12 years ago. So that can't happen again, anyway.
I agree. Thank you. Again, I let the time go past a little bit, because I know that was a significant issue in the past with construction and the traffic related to that. So thank you, Paul, for reminding us of that situation, and that needs to be addressed. Anything else that hasn't been raised yet? I'm just going to ask a general question. If you have some new concerns or concerns that haven't been addressed yet, would you like to come forward and say those? Yes, I see the hand go up here, and a hand there, and then one in the back. Go ahead.
My name is Tom Mays. I'm at the next-door unit, the condominium at 439. Two issues. One is, I have a health background, and I'm very concerned about an institution like this evacuating elderly people in the event of an emergency, fire, earthquake, whatever, and, and what, what is in place as a plan to safely do that. And the second thing is, I drive down the driveway to the underground parking, and me imagining more cars, it's a one-way street. You're either going down or you're coming up. It's not wide enough to allow bidirectional traffic. That's a major concern in terms of the parking, unless the whole thing is redone. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, you were on the, on the list, Mr. Mays, so appreciate that. And then there is Hazel and Jim Smith, Mahal Road.
Thanks very much. And I, in keeping with the minute, I will say that I think that most of the concerns that my wife and I have, have been addressed by Councilor Van de Valk and by this gentleman, particularly about traffic, parking, and safety. And of course, the difficulty that I think our community has is that for 15 years, we've had people coming along wanting to put the Taj Mahal on a postage stamp, and too bad about the neighbors. So I'll let you go, and I've saved a half a minute for you.
And we appreciate that. Thank you. Richard Stevenson?
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Stevenson. My wife, Margot, and I live at 323 Hall Road. We've been owners there for 25 years, and she's a multi-generational Qualicum Beecher. I agree with everything that's, that's been stated against the project around traffic, parking, height, density, bank concerns, and specifically, these poor neighbors. I would also suggest that it's a slippery slope in terms of changing zoning codes like this, from residential to different types of institutional and commercial. We are very fortunate to be on a 10-acre piece of land that is just 100 or 200 yards away from this site. And the risk is that we then now look at, you know, an opportunity to profit down the road from similar types of projects. I hope that's not the route that the council goes, but it is a, a risk for the broader community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Stevenson. Taryn Teugner? Somebody still wants to speak to that. Stephanie Forsites from Hemsworth. Stephanie?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I don't want to, again, as the last speaker said, say anything that's already been said. I, I support those comments that have spoken against the project. I'm fairly new to Qualicum Beach. I live on Hemsworth. And I'm a person who reads the OCP. I read it very thoroughly before coming. I've been involved intimately with many developments of OCPs. And so I understand the importance of these plans. I also know that tweaking an OCP to allow for minor zoning is one thing, but to change the zoning to allow for development of this significance, in my mind, is not a tweak, it's a major overhaul. And the public did not support that. So I just want to remind or suggest that we don't go that way. I also wanted to say, in addition to the traffic, which has been spoken about quite a bit, I just want to alert you to these, the numbers of vehicle traffics that's on that road. I thought it was going to be quite minor, but I'm quite surprised to find the, the numbers of people traveling at all hours of the night, and the safety concerns I have, especially as people can't see over the crest of the hill going west on Island Highway. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Porter? Okay. Lisa, and I'm sorry if I don't read the names properly, but Lisa Soudum? Anyone hear about that name? Okay, anyone else who would like to speak? Who hadn't spoken yet? Come on up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Tony Calla. I'm at 444 Judges Row, below the proposed project. I just, I, I, this is a part-time home for us, so I don't keep clothes up here suitable for meetings like this, so apologies for my attire. I was shocked to hear what, about this, and just heard about it yesterday. And that's why I'm here today. One concern we have, and I think I speak for my neighbors along the way on Judges Row, is bank stabilization. We've seen these projects on Sunshine Coast and North Shore of Vancouver, where there's been catastrophes, where these kind of projects have been built on the top of banks. And I'm sure there was some geotech done and engineering studies years ago when the first portion was built. But I really want to know, at this stage, what's, what's been done and what's been updated, and what the understanding is on the stability of that bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perhaps I can ask after the proponent to address some of these concerns. So anyone else from the gallery that hasn't spoken? Yes, go ahead.
My name's Melissa Vanry. I live at 381 Burnham Road. I've lived there since 1998. My concern, having experienced the last development, is where is going to be the construction access? Will it be on Burnham Road? How are they going to get the trucks and equipment into the property? Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all good questions. And gentlemen in the back, come on up.
My name is David Assissons. I'm the owner at 438 Judges Row. This is going to look right down in my backyard. It's too high. It's looking down where my grandchildren are playing. I've been here 10 years. It is against the, the community plan. It, the character of the neighborhood is going to be severely impacted. It's, in my view, an inappropriate place to put this kind of development. I've had experience in these areas before. I'm just retired from many years as a lawyer. And I, I think that you're taking a community like Qualicum Beach, a very unique community, and one with a very strong residential element, and you're plopping, and I use that word, I know it's maybe a little inappropriate, but plopping a institutional development into it. You're changing the zoning, so you're changing the whole community environment. And I'm very concerned and very opposed to it. And the other elements have been discussed. On Judges Row, we have problems with traffic, with beachgoers and looky-loos. And this area is even tighter in terms of the, the traffic avenues, and it's going to cause major problems. And the community has hard enough time in the summertime and other times policing traffic problems. This is going to be, in my view, a nightmare. Also, that road is, 19A is a major, a major artery, and you've got a lot of people who have, are vulnerable, that are going to be trying to cross that road. It, it's just, it's just a bad idea in every way. Thanks. Sorry if I went too long.
No, that's fine. Thank you. I think, I think we've heard a pretty good mix of concerns. Very well spoken, very well articulated, and very respectful. And I think rather than asking the proponents to respond to all these issues, I think it would be good if they took a look at all the concerns that were raised. And when they meet with you, with a neighborhood consultation, that they would provide responses to some of the concerns, and how they would address them. So with that, unless there's somebody who has something to raise that we haven't heard yet, I would say we can probably move on and, and look forward to, any idea what timeframe, if you're going to have this public information meeting, what timeline for dates?
Our vote would be within, within the next four weeks.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Council, that was the only thing on the agenda. And I need a motion to adjourn.
I just had a couple little things.
Okay, keep it short.
Yeah, very. Just the, the two things about a traffic study and slope stabilization with the geotech, that should be expected for a project like this if it does move forward. Like, that should be a bare minimum. And also, for the slope stabilization, we'd probably want to have a meeting where we sit down and walk through, okay, step one, what happened? Step two, what happened? Step three? Because we've seen it before with another project, there are a lot of concerns about the slope. And it's fair for folks who are laypeople, like, when it comes to that geotech work, I'm a layperson too, to be walked through that to show, okay, how can it be done safely, and what investment needs to be done to make sure the slope is maintained? Because it is, obviously, we don't want something to happen.
You're absolutely right. That's a given. That's the number one question is safety. So with that, a motion to adjourn. Councilors Van de Valk, Councilors Gipsy, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed of any carried? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.